All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Start with the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
What are you doing?
Scott.
I don't know yet.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
David.
Here.
Angela.
Yes.
Sherry. Thank you.
We have Casey Timmons and Shannon.
We have a donation for the community of Wyndham. We would just like to know where you would like to put it. We have purchased a sidewalk library, take a book, leave a book. It is already weighed down with sand and ready to sustain the weather here in Ohio, so we're ready to drop it. Where do you want it? I could drop it here and then you can move it.
All right, so we have, uh...
It's outside. It's outside if you guys would like to see it.
Just like the one here, some?
It's the same one as Sharon's though, yep.
If you wanna just leave it, we can move it ourselves.
Absolutely.
And if you wanna get with us for like, if you had a certain place in mind?
Well, we did like the idea of the police station. We felt that it was a new police station. We felt that it's being by the elementary school. It has the attraction of all the families and the kids in the community, and it's pretty accessible being there. That would be our first recommendation. And then what was the second recommendation, right there in the, where like the gazebo is?
Okay.
In town.
I like the police station idea.
Yeah.
It's more traffic. It's like centrally located.
Yeah, I thought it was central, really trafficked, that great community spot.
You can read a book while charging your car.
We, uh...
Sure, waiting to bail someone out, I don't know, right?
All right, so yeah, um, do you guys need help unloading that?
No, I can get it slid down the ramp, as long as we're not moving it anywhere, we're fine.
No, you can move it, I'll have Ryan will take care of it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Paul Miller. He is going to speak with us about the manufacturing investment that wanted to come.
So, Paul Miller, I'm here on behalf of Sunwise. They are a manufacturer out of Oregon that came into town last week to meet with us in person. They're looking at a potential light industrial manufacturing development here within the village. It's the site. I got a little rough drawing here, I don't know if anybody can see it, I'm gonna walk around and show you. Kind of, you ever think in this would be our first phase building, second phase, third phase? Totaling the three phases would be a little over fifty-five thousand square feet of full building. First phase would be about twelve thousand square feet. We do have some basic drawings of the building. Yeah, yeah, the fair... Yeah, so, um, kind of, you know, we're still kinda working through some stuff, there's some kind of initial thoughts and design. You know, pretty, the design could be changes, trying to get something that fits the client's, you know, program. Their offices would be in front, then they would start their manufacturing and add on to the building as it kind of moves forward.
How many people would maybe hire for manufacturing?
So... Let me get to my next page here.
Did I jump the gun?
No, that's okay. So, right now, currently, they have, um... At their current facility, they have about twenty-three employees. Their total economic impact is kind of what we're trying to get to, obviously. You know, our first initial kind of losses, both property tax, property tax, sales tax, all that stuff, they're probably around a six-figure impact a year on the economy. Be kind of, I would say, a safe that, uh, to start thinking about. So, I mean, that's good, we don't have it right now. And then their total growth goals are, you know, to far exceed that. I think he sent me some figures currently, in their Hubbard location, they have, um, if I can find it exact here. Right now, last year in Hubbard, they had three-hundred-and-forty thousand in direct and seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand indirect subcontractors working on the building, so, um, and payroll. Let alone that's not their property or sales tax as well, so. It's, um, you know, definitely be good for the village and something that we wanna just kind of keep our foot on the gas, try to move forward. Anything else I can answer, I'm happy to. We're very preliminary still, I mean, you guys went and did a great job, laid everything out. We're still waiting on hoops, we put a hoops ticket in, they're way far behind, we're gonna dig some test holes and then come back with a formal offer to purchase the land.
Test?
Thank you.
No questions? Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five regular council meeting.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, fiscal officer financial reports as of today. Income and property tax collected year to date is four-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-five dollars and eighty-seven cents, which is forty-two thousand, more than last month's report. Total revenue collected year to date as of today, one-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. That's about a little over seventy thousand more, seventy thousand dollars more of revenue than last report. Expenditures year to date is one-million-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and eighty-four cents, eighty-five cents, I'm sorry, eighty-five cents. That's including payroll. And then we went over budget, so I have nothing else at this time.
Thank you. Old business? Do we have any old business? Council president's report.
The only thing that I have is there will be an opportunity working with regional planning for two potential grants for the park in February and in May.
Thank you. Dispatch, police, fire, and rescue, Terry.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the police, fire, and rescue dispatcher's report for July of two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the police, fire, and rescue dispatcher's report for July twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you, Terry. All right, mayor's communication, I just kinda wanna piggyback off of what Paul said. I did meet with the owner, I believe, yeah, the owner.
Yeah, David Eifman, yeah.
And his team. I think it's a good opportunity for the village, think it'll help us out the long run. We have went over, right now it's always a numbers game, so going over the numbers right now, and I, I just think, when it comes to, think it'll be a good opportunity for the village, so. Once all that information gets out, we'll set up all the proper meetings and whatnot and get all that stuff out to you. The other thing I wanted to go over, I know we approved, um, Halloween for, with the thirtieth.
The thirtieth, right.
So, is everyone still comfortable with that?
It's five to seven, I think, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Other than that, um, normal steps going on. We will have an executive session at the end to discuss some stuff also. Finance, David.
Motion to approve the fiscal officer's expenditures as received and expected to date twenty-twenty-five and to, and approved to pay the bills as received.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the fund status report as received, ending eight twenty-two, eight twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two-five-seven, a resolution authorize... Authorizing the village fiscal officer in the village of Wyndham under section... You good?
Yeah.
Seven fifteen point two-six-one of the Ohio revised code to certify the following sums to the Portage County Auditor to be assessed and collected as taxes for delinquent lots contracted by the village of Wyndham totaling six-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars as set forth herein in declaring an emergency. Motion to adopt a resolution twenty-two-five-seven.
Gotta do a suspend the rules, gotta be on hold.
Motion to suspend the rules, please.
Second. Thank you.
Oh, I need to read all kinds.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five-seven.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Same thing with the next one.
Resolution twenty-two-five-nine, a resolution authorizing the village fiscal officer under section seven-one-five point two-six-one of the Ohio revised code to certify the following sums to the Portage County Auditor to be assessed and collected as delinquent housing licensing fees totaling ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars as set forth herein in declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five-nine.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
All right, a resolution amending resolution twenty-two-five-six stated August fourth, twenty-twenty-five, in part, and authorizing the village fiscal officer to expend a certain amount of funds in regards to purchase of water meters and declaring an emergency. Wait, is playing this one?
You have to suspend first.
Oh, motion to suspend the rules.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Discussion.
Yeah, can we have discussion, some backstory on this?
So, when we originally passed the twenty-two-five-six, that amount was correct, however, the year was twenty years at one percent instead of ten years at one-point-seven-five percent. When we also discussed that initial resolution, um, twenty-two-five-six, it was that we were going to get a loan for two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. We're not, we're actually gonna get the loan for two-hundred-and-six-five-twelve, and then we're gonna pay the remaining amount of that bid of two-hundred-and-eleven because we have funds in the water meter replacement fund. So, because we originally passed something that isn't accurate, we now have to amend that and move forward, so there was decisions not to do that supplemental loan.
Okay. Anybody else having anything?
So, we're gonna pay the difference between the two-eleven and the two-oh-six?
Yes. Five-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars.
Okay.
We would've paid eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars just to do a supplemental loan. And we have funds in that account, so.
Okay.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five-ten.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
No.
Angela?
No.
Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you, David.
And utilities.
Oh, I get to read them?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two-five-eight, a resolution authorizing the village fiscal officer of the village of Wyndham under section seven-three-five dot two-nine of the Ohio revised code to certify the following sums to the Portage County Auditor to be assessed and collected as delinquent water sewer rents totaling sixty-one dollars and sixty cents as set forth herein in declaring an emergency?
So, we'll suspend the rules?
Oh, motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, motion to adopt resolution twenty-two...
Oh, hold the roll call really quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, slow, slow. Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Can we discuss this real quick? How delinquent are they? It's a very minute amount of money.
This is what was provided to me by utilities clerk, um, so I can't see like the months or the years of how long they've been delinquent or kind of hanging out, not sure if this is... From last year as well, you know, maybe they didn't pay, but it is only the sixty-one dollars.
Split between two accounts.
Correct, that is correct, so one was thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents and then another was thirty dollars and seventy-two cents.
Okay.
So, you know Angela, when, when, uh, we don't have, uh, three reads, yeah, that's when you have an emergency.
Okay. Can I go on now?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adopt the resolution twenty-two-five-eight.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay. Resolution twenty-two-five-ten, a resolution authorizing the village administrator to contract with Metropolitan Environmental Services to provide water line cleaning services for the village of Wyndham and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt the resolution twenty-two-five-ten?
I'll say.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Safety and service, Sherry. Twelve, economic development, Terry.
Okay, a moment, okay. Resolution twenty-two-five-eleven, a resolution authorizing a contract with Dunham Engineering for engineering, designing, construction, management services for Ohio Public Works Mission, twenty-two-five, resurfacing project and declaring an emergency. Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Sherry? Angela?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
No.
Okay, motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five-ten. Before I do that, is there a discussion? Does anybody want to have a discussion on that?
You don't need an engineer to do the work on roads.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, per the grant, we do.
Yes, you do.
For the grant, you need an engineer.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, is he gonna be present when this work is going on?
Yes, he'll be here to see what's going on during the project, so as...
Will he be here during the whole project?
I would want to say...
The project supervisor would be Brian.
Right.
The reason that we have Rob Dunham, he was the mayor of our town, he lived there for years. He is very knowledgeable and he is very reasonable. If we didn't, we would be doubling our, our bill.
Okay, have, have we, um, reached out to anyone else to see if they're any cheaper?
Okay, so...
Yes.
When you, when you, when you hire an engineer, it's not like, it's not like other services. You, you don't base it off who's cheaper. You have to base engineering services off who's the best qualified for that job, so to do it, like, if someone come in and undercut him, that'd kind of be illegal to, to hire him just because he was cheaper. And right now, Rob Dunham, there's no one that's more qualified than Rob because he's been doing these for the last almost two decades. Yeah, so technically, there's no one more qualified than Rob, so...
I did send over the scope when I had originally sent over his contract to you guys last week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have that.
And he was the one that wrote and secured the, the grant for those as well.
Okay.
My question, why, what declares this as emergency if this process has been going on since last year, Charles?
So that he can get going with, with the bidding process going.
So, we had to do three reads, even though we knew this process was going on?
They wanna get the process moving since it is an emergency.
So, lack of planning, right?
No.
Because this, the project's been in motion since last year. That's all.
All right, motion to adopt the resolution twenty-two-five-eleven.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry? Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
No.
Angela?
No.
Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you, Terry. Thirteen, personnel, Scott.
All right, um...
Can I, before we do go through these, can we go into executive session, discuss these?
I do have some questions also before I vote on these.
Okay.
It would be to, uh...
Same thing.
Yeah. Hiring. Oh, first time. I can pull it up if you need me to work for it. All right, there.
Can we just, uh, kind of skip this one and come back to it when we're done?
We can table this too, we go on six, seven.
Okay.
Before, maybe that might be...
Fourteen, we, uh...
Yeah.
Cheryl?
I don't have it.
Um, what about the slide and stuff, is that still in there?
The last time I looked at it, it had a board at the top, so it'll be through down.
It's no longer there, right?
What, the board slide?
The slide, is it still there?
Yeah, Rob said, we said, uh, we're gonna get on, we was just looking at that today. We're just worried about getting that hole out of there, like, we don't wanna cut it off because then they could, they could get hurt, and it's, we're trying to figure out a way to pull it out, fill it up, and then, and get it out like that.
Do we still have an excavator in the back though? Do we use those pieces of equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's pretty big, so...
Yeah.
We'll get it out, we just...
At least that hole's covered to where nobody can go down it.
Right.
That's all I know.
All right, um, thanks, Cheryl, planning commission, we have nothing this week. Police, great.
I just wanna thank everybody for helping it the night out. It turned out to be a pretty decent event, I liked it. I was impressed with everybody that did their job. The impound lot is gonna open, I'm ordering the surround cover for the fence so that you can't see the cars in there. I'd like to do that and get it up before we start putting cars in there, so we should be able to do that by end of this week, next week.
I didn't hear the last part.
The impound lot covering the fence so you can't see the cars inside. So, the lights... Oh, yeah, so the lights are up, I gotta get those adjusted, I had some complaints on it lighting up the whole side of town, so... It's very high, so we're gonna have to have somebody come out with a bucket truck to lower them, but other than that, uh, everything's on track.
How's the camera going?
Good, very good.
Is it seeing money?
We're starting to, I think the camera is either close to or paid off, I haven't looked at the numbers this week, but I know that, uh, we're gonna be in the positive territory. I mean, we already are, but we should be getting a hundred percent of what we should be getting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, zoning, Wesley?
Nothing.
Can I ask, did you get my message when I, I called you and your, um, when I called you, it said that the thing was...
Filled up.
Mailbox was... Mailbox, I called you two or three different times and they said that the mailbox was full.
It is empty.
I know, because I did call two or three different times and it was full. All right, thank you.
All right, eighteen, housing, DeMell, you didn't send me anything. Village administrator, Ryan?
I got a call from Rhonda Tanner, she's with the Title Professional Group. I don't know if it is sold or it's getting ready to be sold in this Ross property, the thirty-six some acres. Yeah, she wants to keep two of those acres out of that thirty-six plot, so, um, if council is okay with that, um, we would have to have a meeting to... Yeah, yeah.
To do a very...
She sent me some information, but...
It's her land. I'm okay with it. Yeah, yeah, but... Right by Tony Rebeans.
She has frontage for that.
Yeah, she's...
So, wood a lot?
Yeah, well, I told them, I, I just, I told them we bring that up, so...
Yeah.
I don't know, that's something we wanna make, uh, I don't think they're in a huge hurry, but that would have to be a special meeting, so maybe something we could do before next...
Well, they're gonna have to get with Wesley.
That's what I'm saying, next council meeting.
They'll stay good with him and get all the stuff, anything you have, we can listen to it.
That's all I got.
Brian, did you get my phone call about the high grass on the building?
I did, um, but we can't, we can't go in backyards, so, I mean, if you, I don't know how that process works, if you guys wanna change that, but we can't, we can't go in backyards, so...
We need to put over the fence.
I know.
I got pictures.
Oh, yeah, but we can't, I mean, if we don't...
We have past precedents of going in backyards alone.
Really?
One being Chafin's property, not last year because they got a landscape company the year before.
I would like to get that clarified though, because we just had an incident a long while ago and they said...
To have our source there look into it?
Yes.
So, I think we should have to be able to do that for health reasons.
I believe if a adjacent neighbor allows you in their yard to see it, then you're allowed to do it.
And you can see it from the road?
Yeah, so...
Can you, you send letters, though?
No, I wanna know the process before I do anything.
I mean, you could send a letter saying the backyard is too high, right, Charles?
You can certainly send a letter.
At least let them know that you're seeing...
I'll check to see what the process is before you can actually go and cut it, I know you can at some point go and cut it. It might be a thirty-day or a short period of time, and if I don't qualify as a nuisance, it's a nature.
And it's visible from the street, so...
Yeah. Is that all, Ryan?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Solicitor, Charles?
Yeah, the state of Ohio passed a new cybersecurity law that affects municipalities, it goes into effect on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. A lot of it has to do with if you're hacked and you're reporting it to the state so they can look into it and keep track of it, it also has different qualifications for how your system should be set up. At this, in, you don't have to have an ordinance in place or a resolution until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, so you have a long time before you actually have to implement it, so they give you time. I would talk with your IP vendor to make sure that they're up to date on this at this point, so that the village is in compliance, starting with it. And that's all I have. I'm gonna do a CLE on it, I think, on Thursday, because it's relatively new to see exactly what they want the village to do.
Our ordinance one forty-three point zero-three might be the one to look at, which is a notice to remove litter assessments, which authorizes the village administrator to, um, act on anything, and one part of it says, uh, anything else of unsightly or unsanitary nature, so that one's...
What was that?
What was that?
One forty-three point zero three. If it doesn't spell it out in our legislation we passed last year to change the height of the grass, that could be the other one.
All right, thank you, Charles. So we have last chance for any council to speak.
I have stickers for the, um, the other trough that doesn't have labels on it. Very nice. So if you need me to put them on, I can put them on also.
Uh, any update on Cornmain hydrant? I called Cornmain the next day and they said they had no record of a hydrant being ordered.
Yeah, he actually sent me an email saying that it was ordered on the sixth of last month.
Okay.
No, not last month, June, of June, and it, it's actually in. When you get up there today, you'll get it, but if you're.
Who is he?
Rocky.
Rocky.
Yeah, I'll send you this right here.
Thank you.
Because I asked him about it and they're like, well, it's, it's right here, so. But, yeah, it'll, it'll be here tomorrow.
Oh, the other thing, uh, I did reach out to another law firm for another solicitor proposal, just so we could look over it. Um, when that comes in, I'll share it with everybody. This is the only one I've been able to get a lawyer so far. It covers municipalities, so. That's all I have.
I have something. I'd like to know why the codified ordinance book hasn't been changed since twenty twenty. And that's when Terry Altier was president, Cheryl Taylor was here, Sherry Pennington.
We're supposed to be getting updates.
It was last done in twenty-one. Mine was updated in twenty-one. Uh, but since Sherry left, we have.
Not had it.
Obviously had several changes at fiscal officer, and it's been brought up before, but then we changed fiscal officers and.
I know, I'm not blaming them.
We haven't, I don't think, had enough time for Miss Deanna here to.
Yeah.
Get it caught up, but that is something I would like to see updated in the future. Yeah. Yeah, every year we would get an update for our books.
All right, that's all I wanted to know, is with the new council that's come in and they look, and they have, it's been five years.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Do you have a book? Tom didn't give you his book?
This isn't updated.
Oh.
He always finds it.
It's the same book that you know.
He didn't update his as I did it?
Oh, we haven't had.
Yeah, I know.
No, I'm as, when he does the ordinances, I thought he would just take it, put it in his book. Maybe he did.
Very true.
I kept copies, but I haven't put them in the book yet.
Yeah? Solicitor should have one.
I go back through. There's a lot of you have them online from twenty-two forward, so you can kind of peruse their own, this, so, that can go pretty often. Yes, sir. That's how I look at the grass stuff, too.
Are we going to, uh? What's the website grid?
They're working on getting a new website. There have been some hiccups on the end of the people that do the website, but it is currently trying to work that out. It, it's, it's a rough, it's technology. You know how that goes.
There's just.
Ninety-eight seventy-five brake drive is yours to mess. He has two vehicles that aren't running. A chair in the front yard and other stuff in the front yard. It's two, and it's a mess. The grass in the back is sky high. I don't know if you cut it the other day or not, but I sent David a picture of it.
That would fall under one forty-three oh three, which is under the.
And also this nine oh six five, um, spring that they just moved in there and that is trash.
I'll, uh, tomorrow, um, I, I only, I have a couple hours. I'm gonna make sure all this stuff gets taken care of. At least jot it down to where it can be, letters can sent out, so we'll get it taken care of.
I think there was five emails sent to village administrator with no response, and I included everybody else on those.
Oh, you got it.
But I did not, because I don't have that email address.
All right, use your, kind of my email from now on.
Is there any, any way we can have, like, um, a complaint? Not a complaint, but like a reporting phone? So somebody could call in and say, hey, my neighbor's not mowing his grass, can you do, send him a, a letter? That way we wouldn't have all the emails and all of that.
So when we get that, um, assistant, how about we add that?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
So when we get the assistant, we'll add that too. They can get that number, so we'll get an extension for, for that.
Have you seen, have you got any applications for that?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, there were five. Um, I just need, uh, Sherry and Scott to get a day to where they can meet with them.
Okay.
Deanna already, already did kind of a leading out system of who they thought were good to work with them, so once those two get together, then we can go from there.
Sounds good. Your own public comment right now?
Um, yeah, uh, still, still. All right, public comment. Anyone from the public have anything to share? Yes, sir?
Yes, um, I had complained for the last decade about the street of Oak Circle. The street's actually sinking on one side. We had, we had to do repairs on it. Found out when we did the repairs that there is no foundation underneath the curves. So that road needs to be completely redone. I've been saying it, like I said, for the last decade, that we have a problem over there. Uh, I asked for the gutters on the side of the road to be cleared out this spring. There's still leaves from this fall. Stopping that drainage to go out to the end of the road, so that part that's sinking is completely, when it rains, submerged. So there's a big, you know, huge puddle making it sink worse. So I don't know how often I have to come up here to replace, but about once a year for the last ten years.
Yeah, I know, I, I've.
Now we're gonna pave over it.
They, um, I will get, I will get that circle cleaned. The circle will get cleaned up around that.
But we have to really talk about, um, having the whole western side, and, you know, whole east side, that circle, redone, just because it is sinking really bad, and now it's collecting water. Um, probably if you remove the leaves, it'll soak back water at this point, because it's not draining anymore.
It's across from Demos.
Yeah.
So it's, it's turned into a bigger issue, because before it was just clean the street, water will go out. At this point, I'm pretty sure, even if you guys clean the streets, it's not gonna drain at this point.
The unfortunate part about it is we have a road resurfacing project coming up that's gonna pave over it and not do any fixes.
And it's just gonna fall apart.
The foundation. When you came last time, I brought up about doing it and we were told it was too late.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw you outside, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've been, like I said, I've been de, complaining about it for a decade. A decade of just neglect, so.
Well, we could get quotes and, uh, figure out where the money comes from.
Yeah, I used to actually work in the industry doing pavements and stuff like that, so I, I knew there was a problem a long time ago. I was trying to help the guys out with that.
Nah, I.
But it's gonna be a big problem now.
Yeah.
Is there a storm drain where you're at, or just a little?
It's all the way down here in the road, so we have, it stops.
So you kind of need, uh, you kind of needed to sit up this way to.
You need to raise it so the water don't break.
Yes, it's running the end of the driveway, so our aprons are falling in.
Most water, most water main, uh, on break couldn't be fixed.
Uh, that just got, I made him aware of that yesterday, yes, Sunday when I seen it. Uh, it's not the same exact one that just got fixed. It's down the line a little bit, so it's gonna get fixed.
You know, again, before you guys replaced the water lines down by Scott's house, I asked for a brake drive to be replaced. That is five years ago, and now we're having problems on brake drive. So can we have those replaced next year?
The lines?
Yes, because we've had too many breaks.
And, and I'm, I'm gonna get into a little bit of, of that situation here in a second, but that was, uh, sent out. We do have to get everything hoops and stuff. We can't just go in digging in, in that manner, so. It was just, I noticed it, I think, Sunday when I was driving, Monday wanted to, alerted Ryan. He followed the procedure. We're gonna get it. Um, as Paul said, hoops is a little behind right now, so whenever they come out to mark it off, that's probably the soonest as we can get in there to start digging. Can't just start digging just to start digging.
What about replacing the lines, mister?
Uh, that, I, I'm gonna get into that here in a second. So with, with that being said, I, I, I sit here, I listen to a lot of things that people want, want, want. Everybody wants something done, like it, it, they want this done. Why isn't this person doing that? Why isn't this person doing that? We have six people up here that we can, you, you have to go find funding. That, that's, there's no other way around it. We are a small community of, you can say, may around a thousand, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, who, who knows? But we have to find funding to help this stuff. We, we have to find financial funding, utility funding, economic funding, all, all that, uh, any kind of funding we can find, we need to find, and we need to make it minimal to where it's gonna help the community. If we're gonna keep sitting here asking for stuff and we're paying for it, eventually it's gonna drain us. I mean, we, we can spend the money, but the money's not rolling in fast enough. It's not enough people in this community supporting. People can be angry, they can be up in arms. That, that's normal. That's what's gonna happen. But when you sit and look at these books and all the stuff that people want, 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 i- i- it's, it doesn't add up. We're just, we're either gonna have to fold or we're gonna be bankrupt forever. And I, I just, I, I want people to start keeping that in their head and their mind frame, when they, you keep asking for once and once and once, is that we have to try and find funding for this stuff to help us in some type of way, because it's not gonna be possible. Like, I, I understand there's issues. We're, we're not the only community in the world with issues, but as I go around and talk to all these different people, the only thing that separates us and them is that their people go out and help them find stuff, and ours just want, want, want. And I'm not saying it in the demeaning manner, I'm just saying we have to use the same energy that we find issues as to find funding. We have to. Like, there's no other way about it. Yes, sir?
Yeah, well, go back to, uh, water lines over in your home. They're fifty years old. Right guy's fifty years old. The first one was put in over fifty years ago. So, you know, and with all the junk that you guys dump into the lines from the water plant.
Are you making accusations?
No. All the cost that you're dumping into the lines is not only coating the lines, but it's also destroying our water lines inside the houses. Now, who's gonna pay for that? Neither, you know? It's EPA, the, um, regulations, is it not?
We don't have a choice. We have to add it.
Uh, I don't believe that, Ryan. I don't believe anything you say anymore. So that, that is, that is a matter. It's unfortunate, because it is tough on our lives.
Oh.
You're drinking well water. You don't need it.
Is there any update on water superintendent posting or anything like that? I haven't been able to find one.
Well, nah, me and Deanna working on it. We're, I'll get it taken care of.
We need it.
Yeah, we gotta update some stuff. It'll, it'll get taken care of. I got sidetracked with the, um, assistant thing. Yes, man?
Um, I called David and I got a hold of that guy that had the checks going out, and today I came home and he left a message, and he'll be at my house Friday.
This is the Brightspeed issue?
Yeah.
Did you find anything out? Because I was just told, uh, so backstory, Brightspeed's trying to issue checks, but they want to give everybody a ten ninety-nine form or a W nine, so that way they have to pay taxes. So when I caught wind of that at the Charo, jeez, I can't talk today. Cheryl advised me that. I talked to Monty from Brightspeed, and he said that's absolutely not going to happen, so I guess he called Lead Corps' boss, or the owner of Lead Corps, and put squash on that. So hopefully the two outstanding checks that are owed to Cheryl and Mr. Burns, uh, will be coming out Friday, like they say they will.
That's what they said.
Um, it just seems real shady the way they're trying to go about it and make the homeowners pay taxes.
Yeah, he said he nipped that when I spoke after I spoke with you. He said he nipped that, told them, let's discuss after their checks come in, so I'm not double calling and going over the same issue again. So you said maybe Fri- this Friday?
Yes.
It was Tuesday. Now it's pushed back to Friday.
So I'll, uh, mail normally gets in around two, three o'clock. Cheryl, I'll give you a call around four before I go to the football game.
Well, he's seen through, you know, he said, we've made a terrible, it's coming from Canada.
Yeah, we hear that a lot for these guys.
Nah, I, I, I got, um, some of the, some of the flames that I've been holding in are gonna come out on them, so we'll, uh, I'll take care of it.
Well, I know you, but I'm just saying I did get the call today.
Nah, I got it.
I also know that there's still drilling to be done, so that's gonna anger some residents, because there will be flags being placed again. Um, because the first three contractors couldn't get all the drilling done, I guess. And then there were supposed to be landscape companies coming in to do the repairs. I drove around the other day and only seen some of the properties fixed. Uh, like one of, Mr. Keller told me the other day saying, hey, one of my two properties that are right next to each other were fixed. So if they were out there, they could have looked across the field and saw the other one that was damaged. I don't know the rhyme or reason, so I'm trying to get it all fixed and addressed. I, it's not been fun.
We got half of ours.
Half, yeah, you got the straw.
The outside of the fence. The inside is still.
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, so it's like they're picking and choosing the easy stuff that they can take care of real quick and getting out, and it's not, not the way it was portrayed to us. We were told it would be nicer than when they got here, so, and that's not that case. So, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Anybody else? I just had a point of four question, I think it's all. Um, we're gonna go into executive session, and Matt had mentioned something about executive session toward the beginning. Is it the same?
Yes. I was just letting everyone know that we would be going into.
There was two.
And when we, we come out, we, I mean, if there, there can still be a discussion, so if you guys want to stick around, that's, that's fine.
There will be voting.
Yeah, so. Alrighty.
Are we gonna pick a calendar dates?
Uh, we're gonna come out anyway.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to ordinance one two one, point two two, G one, personnel matters, appointment, 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 dismissal, promotion, demotion, discipline, or compensation.
Go ahead.
Compensation of public employee official.
Uh, Charles, don't we have to be more specific?
No, that's it, that's the.
That's what it's, uh, I did research that.
There's five or six specific reasons you can go and discuss the personnel and points.
All right. Since twenty-seven, I'd like to make a motion to, seven, I'm sorry, seventy, twenty-seven, make a motion to adjourn executive session.
Second.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Now we go back to, yes, Scott.
If no one else, I'm, excuse me.
I see ya. Thank you so much, Leah. Thank you.
All right, so thirteen, Scott, personnel?
Yeah. All right. I think, uh, motion to approve the appointment of full-time fiscal officer, Deanne Mangus.
I'll second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes, but you have to do as.
They will be, yeah, as amended for your hire date.
Yeah.
You gotta put the five hire date on there, okay?
It's a red trim type thing.
That way it's recorded.
Yeah.
David, you got that one, right? Second, no.
Yeah, I said.
You good on that one?
Yep.
Approve, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint, uh, to approve the appointment of part-time water sewer worker, Joe Summers.
Give it a second. Just a second. Scott?
Yes.
I'd like to make that not water.
I'd like to make that not water, just water sewer support, just village support or something.
Yes, a part-time worker maybe.
Yeah, part-time worker.
Well, let's do that.
If he's gonna be at the street department.
Yep, yep, part-time worker.
Nope, you're up, Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
No.
Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Before we move forward, do I, do we need a new job description if we're changing?
Hours too. There's probably all kinds of.
Hours are gonna be touchy, but we gotta have a job description, sure.
I'd rather it was the hours not to exceed.
I do, yeah.
But that may be a thirty year.
Well, his hours, what makes it change?
It depends on what he got, he's only as needy, so that's what I'm saying. You guys gotta realize that too.
Yeah, it might exceed thirty hours a week.
So does that have to come back to like approval since the job description there keeps changing?
Well, I mean, he's still supporting the same things, I think, just adding.
As long as it's on record.
While we amend it, we'll decide the description.
Alright, we ready for the next one?
Yep.
Making a motion to approve the appointment of part-time office assistant, Adriana Daniels.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry? Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I also make a motion to approve the appointment of part-time survey inspector, James Ransom.
Is his name James?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Cheryl. Yes.
David?
No.
Angela?
No.
Terry?
Yes.
Alright, that's all for, uh, personnel.
So we are to the counter. We have September ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M.
I'm good with it.
September sixth.
September ninth.
Your last page.
September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, six P M.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Check on Charles. Hey, are you good? September twenty-third at six P M? Oh, okay, alright, thanks. Yeah, he's good.
Alright, seven thirty-three, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn on the regular council meeting.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Cheryl? David?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Thank you.
David, can you hand me the door?
Oh, I sure can.